Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our August 9, 2022 Gloucester City Council meeting. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council in according to open meeting law, since this meeting is posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be made by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. It's the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual shall be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual, developmental, mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. In this vein, we as city councilors do not know language that is discriminatory or offensive and will not accept it at city meetings. I'd like to begin by introducing the members of the city council that is here, that are here. My name is Val Gilman. I'm Ward Four, City Councilor, and I'm Council President. Frank Majota, Scott Memhard, Jason Gro, Tony Gross, Jeff Worthley, Jamie O'Hara. Missing right now are Councilors O'Neill and Sean Nolan will not be here tonight. I'd also like to introduce members of city staff that are here on the call. First of all, our city clerk, Joanne Sinos, Sal Di Stefano, who is our Economic Development Director, and he's going to be presenting in about a half hour, Jill Cahill, who is our Chief Administrative Officer, and Suzanne Egan, who is our Chief Legal Counsel. I think that's all that I see, members of city staff that are here on the call. Let me just see. I think we're all set. So, first order of business, Madam Clerk.
First order of business is oral communications.
Thank you. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has requested or complained of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the Office of the Mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in public comments for up to three minutes for anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Let's see, I think I see one person has a hand raised. It's Mike Frenette. Joanne has already brought Mike in. Mike, would you introduce yourself and state your address? And you have up to three minutes to talk to the city council.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I live on 16 Myrtle Square, and my concern is with the crosswalk at Railroad Street. Being 71 years old, I have to get out every day to do some walking. I try to get in two, three miles a day, and I find that the biggest challenge in that route is across Washington Railroad Street. And what I find is that coming off of Railroad onto Washington, people do not stop at the stop sign. It's just, just a given. I run into trouble when I'm already in the crosswalk and I can't, again, jump or hop or anything at my age, and people come very close to me. The traffic coming off of Washington Street onto Railroad Street, they are more concerned with the oncoming traffic. So when they make their commitment to come onto Railroad, I'll be standing in the middle, and then they have to lock up the brake and, you know, tell me they're sorry they didn't see me or whatever. But I've been on the hood a couple of times, and that frightens me. I haven't hit once, but that was on Pearl Street. That was about a month ago. So it's, the whole town is, the whole city is kind of dangerous, but I find Railroad to be exceptionally so. As far as possible remedies, I'm not a traffic engineer. I can't help you there, but I would suggest that there's one stop sign on, on Washington, and it's in the island, in the island on Railroad Street. If we put one on the right-hand side of the street, that might help, but I'm not sure. I just want to raise the issue because I do feel, with the number of close calls I had, that someday I'm going to be a statistic. And I raised it to the mayor, March, in March, when not only was it difficult, but I had to contend with the, the snow that made me sort of invisible to the, to the drivers. So anyway, that's, that's my tale of woe, and I hope to someday see some action taken.
Thank you very much, Mike, for coming to speak to us. And I'd like to note that Council O'Neill is now in, on the call as a panelist. I don't know, Joanne, if you need to bring her in right now. I don't see her on the screen, but she is down as a panelist. So the next order of business, I see no more hands raised for public comments. I'd like to, without objection, ask that we take the public hearing 2022-018-RZ-2022-00 out of order because of a scheduling conflict with our attorney, who needs to be at the Licensing Board meeting at 6:30. So by doing this first, if we have any questions that come up for a general counsel during the public hearing, she will be here to answer it. So, Madam Clerk, without objections, councilors, are we okay to, to move on? I see, I see no objections. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you introduce that matter of business?
Public hearing 2022-018, rezoning 2022-001, the Man Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 5.11.3, parentheses 1, 5.11.3, parentheses 2, 5.11.4, parentheses 1, 5.11.4, parentheses 2, regarding inclusionary housing requirements, continue from the June 14, 22 city council meeting.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing and turn control of the meeting over to Council Grow, who will introduce the amendment that's in front of us.
Thank you very much, Council Gilman. I brought this council order forward as a response to what I found to be some ambiguities in the ordinance language in terms of when and how we apply the inclusionary housing ordinance. The planning board did an amendment to the, to the ordinance a year ago, a year and a half ago, and when they did so, they created some language that allowed for a great.
Council Grow, we're not hearing you very well. You're freezing up as you're speaking. Could you?
When and how. So it was my intention with, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just, if you give me one moment, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to my phone. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm clear.
The point was to, was to bring some clarity to the inclusionary housing ordinance, which of course is what triggers the payment of a in-lug fee or the creation of an actual affordable unit in a development project. So I, I put forward my, my language to the planning board as a council order. They have since then met a couple of times to review it and have come back with their recommendations for language that they think provides even greater clarity and defines more fundamentally what we mean by inclusionary housing when it's imposed and the, 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 it outlines, it really removes ambiguity. And I think what we found when we had, we had a petition before the city council earlier this year was that the wording "creation of" caused some conflict in terms of what, what do we mean by "creation of"? And what the interpretation was based on the language of the existing ordinance as it is today, is that you could not, you had to create, be triggered. That meant that if you had a five-unit building and you put a unit on there, that created six, that was not a trigger. You would have to have, if you put a, if you had a four-unit building and put two new units, that would not trigger the affordable housing, the inclusionary housing ordinance. You had to create six brand-new, completely brand-new units in order for this to happen. And I don't think, my, my thinking was that was not the intention of the planning board when they put the language in there. And in fact, the language before this, I don't have it in front of me, but my, my understanding from, from talking to Greg Cattamatory was that the language prior to this was actually more in line with what I'm proposing today, so, and what I, what I proposed to the planning board. So the, what the planning board came back with was that they said that they're gonna take, they, they recommend removing involving the creation of six or more dwelling units, which was the ambiguity there, and saying the addition of one or more residential units that results in a development with six or more dwelling units. You have a building somewhere, and you decide to tear it down. Under the current ordinance, if you want to build a six-unit building there, you're only creating two new units, even if those are six brand-new constructions. So by changing the ordinance, what we're saying is, is that we really actually want to encourage the creation of inclusionary housing, and where that's not possible, we want to ensure that we have developers paying into the Affordable Housing Trust so that those funds can then be used later on to create affordable housing and other opportunities for housing in the community. My personal preference is that, the whole point is that it's called inclusionary housing for a reason, and that is that there is an effort to create projects that are multi-social economic levels, so that you don't just create pockets of wealthy housing and pockets of affordable low-income housing. The idea is you, you build a stronger community when you blend these different socioeconomic groups together so that they're living closer to each other. That is not always going to be possible with the six or more, six units, six to nine units, but it is definitely going to be possible with the nine to 10-plus units, which are also part. If our, if our mission is to create more housing, more affordable housing, this is a way that clears the way for projects moving forward to know what they're, what they're going to be facing, how much they're expected to contribute to the Affordable Housing Trust if they decide to buy out of it, or what they are expected to build if they continue to build moving forward. And that was the intention. So I don't have much more than that. It's fairly straightforward. I know you've all read it. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can answer. I'm sure Suzanne Egan can answer any questions. I'm, I'm gonna get to that. You're gonna do the public hearing part of it. I'm just saying that.
Right, exactly. Council Grow, because you are acting as an applicant right now on this matter, do you feel that this could be the time to just show the, share the screen through?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Yeah, that's, that's a great idea. Joanne, can we, can we see the screenshot of that? All right. So the, is, this attitude version is that you see the, the involving the creation of six or more dwelling units is, is the part that's being, is eliminated, and the planning board has added for the addition of one or more residential units that results in a development with six or more dwelling units. That eliminates any ambiguity about whether or not we're talking about the final number of units in the project or, or how many units, you know, are being developed. So I think that, that they were being very careful and, and very thoughtful in ensuring that, you know, there was no ambiguity in planning and development. And the explanation was that you might have a situation where you have a six-family home, and, and for some reason, that's been under, under a special modification, that special permit. If they're not adding any units, they would not then be retroactively subject to the, to the inclusionary housing ordinance. So if you had a permit that existed, they would then be able to modify their permit without being subject to this. It's only with the addition of, or the creation of, of new units that this is effective.
Okay, thank you. So is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this zoning amendment? Seeing none, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, are there any communications on this matter?
There are no communications.
Hey, councilors, this is an opportunity to ask questions, and we're happy that Suzanne Egan is on the call. If we have any questions that we'd like to ask our chief legal counsel. Council Memhard.
Thank you very much. For clarity, could you explain how this relates to the experience of our being asked to permit a multi-family unit dwelling that was existing but not permitted? Actually, we recently dealt with it goes from five to six.
Council Grow, it'd be great if you could explain, and if we feel like it would be helpful to, to hear Attorney Egan, if you can do the same.
From my perspective, I would say that you had, you didn't have a permitted structure at that point, but not being an attorney, I'm only basing this on my personal feeling and read of the, of the ordinance, that by creating a seven-unit building as we did at 222 Main Street, properly permitted, that it would apply, but I would defer obviously to Suzanne Egan on this, because she's the one who would have to defend that decision.
Okay. Attorney Egan, would you?
Do you want to jump in?
Can you elaborate?
I mean, yes, I think what the, the issue was is back when you were reviewing the special permit application for the six, the permit six residential units, the ordinance at that point was looked at as creating, as only applying when there is a net new six residential units. And because it wasn't a net new, so you were taking the amount of existing units, and you were then subtracting the number of new units that would be permitted, and as long as that was, that figure, right, the total product was six additional, then your inclusionary zoning ordinance would apply, and that was the determination under that special permit. What this zoning, or what this ordinance, the amendment to this ordinance is saying is that if it's even an addition of one or more units, which creates six units total, not looking at the net, then the inclusionary ordinance applies. So it's really trying to get to the fact that what, looking at the number of units existing and to be added.
And if I, if I could jump in there, I think, I think Scott was also alluding to the fact that with the 222 Main Street project, that was, was effectively a special permit to legalize for non-legal or illegal apartments, the net creation was a, was a seven-unit building that was fully legal, and I think he's asking whether or not that would still apply the, the inclusionary housing ordinance to it today if the language were, I don't know. I guess my question, back to you.
So, so I think what your question is, is that you have an existing building with seven residential units, right? And then you're, and then the person, and they're not fully permitted. So with that particular instance, there were a number of units allowed as a matter of rights, so they didn't need to have a special permit for all of the units in existence. So they come to the special permit granting authority and seeking to obtain a permit for those existing residential units. So I would look at it as what is the purpose of this zoning ordinance? It's to capture when additional units are created, are added to the housing stock? And in this instance, they wouldn't be, there wouldn't be any units added, they would be in existence. All they're doing is getting properly permitted. So the way that this is written, there would be an argument by the property owner to say, we're not adding any units to the housing stock in Gloucester, so we don't have that, that inclusionary zoning doesn't kick in, and we don't have that obligation to create it in an affordable unit because they're existing.
And I would, I would add to that, Scott, my, my, my feeling on that is that even though I, I would have preferred to have seen a, an affordable unit come out of that, I think that the, what, what did come out of that, as it was written, was sufficiently vague. So even if we didn't get a unit out of it.
So let's, let's stick with the questions. Council Grow, we're having a hard time consistently hearing you because you're freezing up quite a bit. So I'm gonna call on Council Gross, who has a question.
Suzanne, as the council, we could have denied that permit, and they would have had to remove those units, correct?
Yes, then they would have been, then they would have been unpermitted.
So we could have offered them the option to either go affordable or we're gonna deny?
Well.
Because they did create seven units in one building with an additional four that they needed the special permit for. If we denied that special permit, they would have only had three apartments there. So they didn't, we, we, in essence, created three new, four new units by granting that permit.
Well, I guess my, I would say this at this point, so I, so not being a part of that permitting process and not fully aware of all of the facts, and that's a debate, and I know there was a, you know, large debate there, and there was, I think I did read the minutes and assisted to draft that decision. So I do understand that the, the council was provided with a legal opinion, and I would say that therefore I don't, I don't feel comfortable like sort of re-providing an opinion on that particular permit application. But we could discuss how this particular ordinance applies to instances like that, but with regard to whether or not we could have required them to tear down the building.
No, 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 I'm, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, is in essence, we have just granted four brand-new permits, which creates four legal units, which I think this ordinance would then apply. That's just how I see it, so, but I'm not a lawyer either, but that's how I see it.
Any other further questions, Council Worthley? I saw your hand was up.
Yes. First, thank you, Council Grow, for taking this on. When we had the discussion before, there were multiple variables. One was, what does creation mean? But they had also had, a building inspector had come in, they were assessed already, they were paying taxes on the units that were already there. So I think that there was a lot of ambiguity on to, as to, yes, they weren't permitted, but they existed. There were people who were in those units. It wasn't as if this were on paper or not on paper. It existed in reality, and I hope that this cleans that up so that, I think the problem is going to be, we find other units along the way, and I think Council Gross raised this question. He said, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but something, how many more of these are out, are out there that are in effect already more than four units or five units or six units but are permitted? And I don't know if we have any answer to that or if we would ever get one, but in the event that that happens, does this ordinance clean that up?
So your, your question to Suzanne Egan right now is that if we found out reoccurring issues, does this, does this clean that up?
The question is really, I'll be more specific, and it could be for Council Grow as well. If we have someone who comes and applies for, let's say, six units, and they have five, I think this reads very clearly, that's creation of one, but it totals six, and that makes sense. But if they have six in existence already but not permitted, there's that gray area in terms of what are they actually asking us for? Where do we kick it? Where does the inclusionary zoning kick in? I have no idea how many units are out there that, that aren't permitted, but I'm sure it's more than one.
I can respond to that. So if you read the specific language of this zoning ordinance, so Section 511.31 provides the requirements of Section 511 shall apply to any application for residential development, mixed-use development, or use variance for the addition of one or more residential units that results in the development of six or more dwelling units on any parcel. And then it goes on to that. So what we would do is we would look at the language of the ordinance and say, does it apply? Is this an application for a residential development for the addition of one or more units? And so you're not looking necessarily, because of the language of this ordinance, you're not looking at whether or not those residential units are in existence or going to be constructed, but you're looking at what the application is for. So it's, you're applying for a residential building that could be, let's say it's for eight units that are already in existence, but it's the first time the application, but it's an application for those units that are bringing additional units on to, under the permit, then it would apply. So it's really what is the application, what does the specific language of the zoning ordinance state?
Thank you. Any further questions, councilors? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from Council Grow.
Seems kind of odd that I'd be doing the committee report and the application report, but on a motion of Council Gilman seconded by Council O'Neill, the Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call vote, three in favor, zero opposed, recommend that the city council amend GZO Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 5.1111, inclusionary housing requirements as follows. You guys can hear me okay? I've been having some problems.
Yes. If you, if you have a problem, I will just continue it, so.
All right, great. Under Section 5.11 dot, point three, parentheses one, the requirements of this Section 5.11 shall apply to any application for residential development, mixed-use development, or use variance for the addition of one or more residential units that results in a development with six or more dwelling units on any parcel, contiguous parcels comprising a proposed development site in R80, R40, RC40, R30, R20, R10, R5, Central Business, CCD, NB, NBB districts, and that includes the removing of the language involving the creation of six or more dwelling units. I'm just gonna read the amendment as it's been recommended. I think that just makes it easier. We all have the language in front of us. Under Section 5.11.
I'm, I'm gonna continue this, Council.
Two, development shall not be segmented, segmented, mean one or, sorry.
I'm, I'm gonna continue this right now because we're not getting you clearly. Development shall not be segmented to avoid compliance with this article. Segmentation shall mean one or more development applications for the addition of one or more residential units that results in six or more lots or dwelling units above the number existing 36 months prior to an application to develop any parcel or set of contiguous parcels held in common ownership or under common control on or after the effective date of this Section 5.11. Under Section 5.11.4, Section 1, in any development application for the addition of one or more residential units that results in a development with six to nine units, the applicant shall provide for one affordable unit either by A, building an affordable unit on-site, B, paying a fee in lieu of the affordable unit to the Affordable Housing Trust fund to be determined in accordance with Section 5.11.5, we struck involving the creation of six. the creation of six. Under section 5.11.4, section two, in any development application for the addition of one or more residential units that results in a development with 10 or more units, the applicant shall provide affordable units to be located in the site of the development on-site affordable units as follows. A, at least 15% of the units shall be affordable for low-income households, or B, at least 10% of the units shall be affordable for very low-income households. C, fractions shall be rounded up to the next whole number we struck involving the creation of. Can I so move?
Okay.
Motion made by Council Gilman, seconded by Council Grow. Is there a narrative, Council Grow, um, before we have a discussion? Or do you think that you've satisfied?
I think the narrative was pretty much what I said in the application. The, the only thing I would add is that the, the planning development referred this back to uh Planning Board, Planning Board, took about a month and a couple of meetings to resolve any issues they had and send it back to us as written. And I feel very comfortable with the language as it is.
Great, thank you. Counsel discussion on this zoning amendment. Council Memhard.
Uh, I, I'd just like to thank Council Grow and others for working on this. I think it is a, a net improvement in clarifying uh these circumstances in an old city like ours. Uh, this is not an unusual thing to run up against, but uh we want to include, encourage uh the accessory dwelling units and uh making this clear and legal as much as possible, inclusionary housing, excuse me. So I, I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Any further discussion, councilors? Council Worthley?
Yes, I echo what Council Memhard just said. I want to thank Council Grow for putting uh.
Council Worthley, we cannot hear you right now. Council Worthley, we can't hear you right now. Any further, any further discussion, councilors? Do you want to try again, Council Worthley? Go ahead.
I just want to thank Council Grow and the Planning Board and P and D. Um, it doesn't say here what the payment in lieu of would be. And I read something that said that will be determined during a process in place to do that, or is it, is it up for discussion per permit? I'm not sure how that's clarified. And it probably doesn't need to be clarified for today. I just want to raise the question.
It, if I, if I could.
Go ahead, Mrs. Bend the procedure to answer the question. Go ahead.
That formula is actually articulated in the next section of the zoning or zoning ordinance and is determined by a calculation of what the, I can't remember exactly what the math is, but basically it's a, it's a median of the last three years of the value of the average property that's being, being developed. So that's already articulated in the next section.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, councilors? Seeing none, uh, roll call vote. Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memhard?
Yes.
Council Nolan is absent. Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman? Yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Thank you. Um, and um just a thank you to Suzanne Egan for juggling her schedule to be here tonight.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Thank you. So next order of business, um, Madam Clerk, prepare for your left off.
His presentation for South Dakota Economic Development Director, we didn't get paid, on Gloucester's local rapid recovery plan.
Okay, at this point, um, I'd like to introduce Sal Di Stefano, who is our Economic Development Director, who's, as City Clerk just announced, um, who will speak on the local rapid recovery plan. And also on the call is um our CAO, Jill Cahill, in case she wants to chime in. So um welcome to you both. And um Sal, you have the floor. And I know that councilors um will have some questions to ask, but I'm sure you're gonna cover almost everything we want to ask. So thank you for being here.
Great, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, councilors. It's good to see everyone, at least virtually, right? Um, but thank you for this opportunity um to give a, a brief update on our local rapid recovery plan uh with the permission of uh Madam Chair. I'd like to share my screen if possible and see if I could bring up a few slides if that's okay with you.
Terrific, please do.
Great.
Madam Clerk, can you make sure that he has access to um, to sharing?
He does. It's all, you know, this.
Can I ask a question while we're waiting?
Go ahead, Council O'Neil.
The slides that you're gonna um show us, Sal, are they available online?
Um.
On the website?
So, so the whole plan is available on the website?
Yep.
Um, I apologize, I'm trying to bring this up on my screen. Um, this is just a summary, basically, of those slides. Um, all right, so.
Here we go.
Okay, great.
Yay.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience. Um, I'm, I'm using a little bit of a, a new version here, and I'm just getting used to it. Um, so thank you for your patience for that. Um, so as I mentioned, I was asked to give a brief update on our local rapid recovery plan. Uh, so thank you for this opportunity and uh definitely welcome Jill to jump in at any time. Um, as you all know, she was Community Development Director during this period, so I want to recognize her work as well as the work of Greg Catamatory, uh, Gemma in our office and, and others. A lot of people uh worked hard on this plan. Um, so the local rapid recovery plan, or LRRP, uh, was funded through the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative, or DHCD. Um, as you can see on the map, we were one of 125 communities uh that participated in this program um that was unique, and it was launched because, as everybody remembers, during COVID, the whole world was locked down. And our small businesses, especially our mom-and-paw businesses on Main Street, I would argue, were hit probably the hardest. Um, you know, for a lot of different reasons. Um, so um the governor uh came up with a plan to, to try to help by asking the communities to participate. So we were free to participate, no one was forced, we had to apply for it, we rewarded the opportunity. So it was conducted in spring of 2021. And as those of you remember, we were still having severe COVID lockdown measures. Um, you, you know, many people were still, most people were still working from home. Um, many businesses were closed or partially operating. So, you know, when we're viewing this plan and the results, I just ask you to think about those times uh that were very, very difficult and almost everybody was in survival mode. I know I was with two kids uh learning from home and, and uh, and missing their friends and, and everything. So um, you know, this program is very important and it was a great opportunity because ever since I started at the city of Gloucester eight years ago, you know, it was always difficult to find money to do a plan. And then the question was, all right, if you do any kind of plan, where's the money and the resources to launch the idea for the plan? So this was really rare that this program was free, no cost to the city, and it could help us identify programs that we could later apply for grants, which I, I, I know councilors always love it when I come forward with grants, so um, especially ones without a match, right? So um, um, we're very excited to, uh, partake in this program. And it was really meant for project identification. It wasn't to solve all the problems downtown. Um, it was to identify uh things that our, our businesses felt like they needed help with and, and hopefully funding. It was rapid, we had six months to complete it, and that was prescribed by the state with specific rules. And there was targeted outreach. So um, we were outreach and directly to our local businesses, as I mentioned before. It was very specific, and we were asked to target those um, those folks uh during, during this process. Uh, but there was a lot of, a lot of outreach, which I'll talk about next. Um, it was data-driven, so it was, it was driven by economic and survey data, um, not just with what Gloucester did, but all 125 communities um reported into the state. So obviously, if they saw all 125 communities needing help with specific things, um, th- those were programs that the state was gonna launch to help. Um, and it was also, uh, what was unique is access to expertise. So we had a plan facilitator who is a subject matter expert, Anne Burke, who has 30 years of experience in downtown economic development. Um, so we were very fortunate to have her. And, and not just her experience um wi- with this and the number of years, but the number of communities she worked with to see, you know, what, what ideas worked, um, worked where. And bottom line is, you know, if, if we didn't, if we didn't do this, if we didn't apply for these programs, another community would, and they would get our money. So um, I'm really glad that we participated in this and, and that um it went uh well. Um, as far as, you know, I talked about outreach. Um, you know, one, one of the, one of the things that we did right off the bat is we sent surveys out to the downtown businesses. The goal there was to get them, get everybody talking about what they needed and, and um, take that data, send it to the state and get some real information. So to my knowledge, something like this was never done before with all 125 communities, again, talking about how COVID impacted them and what the city and the state could do um to help them out. Um, the um, the surveys were advertised and the meetings were advertised on email, social media, and the, on the former mayor's page, phone calls. Um, the GDT did a story uh on it, it was on the city website. So everybody worked really hard to get the participation. So um, like anything we do, or even meetings held by city council, you put it out there, you work hard to get the, to get the results, and you work with the people who respond. We know that some folks were busy, and again, we're in survival mode because of COVID, but we're really thankful for those who responded and, and uh worked with us. Um, focus groups were conducted. You see some of the categories on the right, retail, restaurants, arts, and attractions, um, property owners. Um, you know, to my knowledge, there were, there was probably uh, um, very few, if any, meetings where eight major property owners were on the same call, uh, talking about what's needed and actually working together and talking about cooperating to help us, you know, recover from this downtown. Um, another thing I'd like to add is because of COVID, a lot of folks turn to Amazon um for their goods and services. Um, and it's really hard to shut that off. It's easy to subscribe, save money, have things sent to your door. So municipalities need to think about their downtowns and, and how do we not only help them survive, but thrive for the future? You know, how, why, we need to give a reason for people to come downtown. And that's only gonna happen through dedicated planning and hard work and stakeholder engagement. So not only do we send surveys, um, we met with individual stakeholders who talked to us about what their concerns are, what their needs are. We did whatever we could to accommodate them, understanding that restaurants had different hours and retailers, arts and attractions, and, and um other folks, they, they had different um, different amounts of time to spend with us. We did whatever we could um to do that. We also held a community forum to um talk about the program and then report on the results. Um, and then all of this fed into the Commonwealth's One Stop Program. So what that is, is in the past, um, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts had several grant programs. Many of them had different deadlines, um, and some of them conflicted with each other. So they brought almost all of their grant programs under one umbrella called the One Stop Program. So basically what that means is a, a lot of the grants that many of you are familiar with, such as Mass Works, um, and other, other grant programs, um, are now coordinated through kind of, you know, one deadline, one application. So the communities that took part, the LRRP, fed all this data to the state, and the state therefore saw what the needs were, issued different programs that municipalities would be eligible for, and it helped if you, if you did an LRRP and could say, hey, w- we, we identified these needs, this is the help that we need. Again, it's not in stone, it isn't solving every single problem, but to show that, that people worked together and worked hard, it wasn't just the city, you know, we're working closely with the Chamber and other partners, Discover Gloucester, small business owners, residents, everybody working together to try to help ourselves get through this, hopefully once in a, once in a generation, once in a lifetime crisis. Um, so through the One Stop Program, I'm happy to report that um we received funding for two programs that came out as a need. So one of them, um, as you know, uh, you did, downtown has several vacancies. Um, vacancies are not good for business, as everybody knows. Uh, anybody who has any experience in real estate, in insurance, or anything, knows that vacancies um are a terrible thing to have because they create tons of liability, you know, uh vandalism could happen, break-ins, um, you name it, and, and just a dark Main Street. No one wants a dark Main Street. Um, so one of the ideas that was successful in other communities that was brought up was uh the concept of a pop-up. Uh, most of you probably know what that is, but just in case, uh, it's a, it's basically a temporary use in a vacant storefront in a way to promote retail uh in a specific area. So there's a program um that we launched called Pop-Up Gloucester. It's currently at 206 Main Street. So uh for those of you who don't know, that's the building owned by Action and um uh has a Golden Lobster on the side, uh, the mural that, that uh is uh now becoming famous. So basically, um, there was a contest, um, uh, or it was a competitive process where entrepreneurs could apply to basically try their hand at brick and mortar. So um, everybody probably knows to sign a commercial lease traditionally takes a significant, significant investment in time and money, and it's just something that a lot of, a lot of entrepreneurs are frankly scared to do. So the pop-up gives them an opportunity for very little money to go in, share the space with someone else, and try their hand at entrepreneurship. Um, so um, we're really excited about it. It was, it just opened on Saturday, they did a soft opening. We're gonna do, um, we're gonna plan on a ribbon cutting soon, um, but we're excited about it. Um, they're, I mean, I believe they're all gonna be uh woman-owned uh businesses, uh which is exciting, and they're gonna add life to that part of uh Main Street. Um, so that's one of the things that was funded through this program. So when this program was run in, in other communities, um, it led to entrepreneurs taking up storefronts um in, in other locations, uh, which is great. It gave them an opportunity uh to try their hand at it and then open their own store or decide that it wasn't for them. Um, so it's really unique, fun program, something different, something creative um that we look forward to. The next uh was a retail commercial district signage program. So this is a program where uh small businesses throughout the city, retailers, could apply uh for a new sign, uh, a grant for a new sign. And what's unique about that is um, you, you know, especially with COVID, um, you know, put, getting a new sign for your business is not necessarily on the top of your list. Uh, my, my family, my, my mother and my brother still run a pizzeria in Milwaukee, and uh, you know, there's always something that takes precedence over new signage, something breaks, um, you know, the supply chain difficulties, costs going up. So this is a program to help uh, you know, get some new signage, breathe some new So this is a program to help, you know, get some new signage, breathe some new life. And we, everybody benefits from attractive storefronts and investment in a community. It's kind of like what I call a reverse of the broken window theory. Somebody gets a new sign, it kind of puts positive pressure on others to improve their storefronts versus the broken window theory, which is, as everybody knows, windows broken, I don't fix it, neighbors' windows broken, et cetera, et cetera. So so we put the program out, again, partnered with the chamber on this. They're facilitating the program, but we received fifty eight applications in a short amount of time and we're awarding twenty six businesses with grants throughout the city. And we're really excited about that. Announcements are happening this week and would like to to thank the chamber for their hard work and and in this program and I I I'm really excited about it because it's 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 really going to help a lot of people. Folks are appreciative and they're happy that the city is trying to help do something. Again, we're not solving everybody's problems, but it's a step in the right direction and it's something that we need to do instead of sit on our hands and hope that, you know, things turn around and change. At least that's that's what I believe. Next steps, parking and traffic study, you know, this is something that we that came up also in the plan that we desperately need. So we did not apply for that through our One Stop because when we submitted a preliminary application for it, basically, the rules for the program wanted us to center around a specific development and it was also limited in the funding we would get. So the planning department is working on scoping and development and with the goal of launching late summer, early fall in assessing and in and seeing, you know, going beyond the anecdotes. What's the current situation with parking? Where could we improve? How could we help? And and move forward with the plan. The next thing is we applied for District Management Organization Plan support. So that was submitted through the One Stop that I talked about before. And the goal is to get technical assistance to take the next steps in in you know, engaging with stakeholders and figuring out once and for all, you know, if if we can support a district management organization. So there's different types of district management organizations. I won't get into it here, but it could be a Main Street program, it could be a business improvement district. They they have different names for it, but basically, as as one well-known business owner has said, that the city and other other organizations are doing great work for downtown, but it really needs, somebody needs to wake up every single day and say, what can we do to move it forward? How can we organize everything from events, street cleaning, you know, promotion of the district, marketing vacant storefronts and taking that on and having it be a sustainable organization. Not something that's set up and is going to compete for fundraising with all the other worthy nonprofits we have in town, but something concrete and something that's based on a model that's been successful elsewhere. But as I mentioned, nothing is in stone. We're looking forward for more engagement. It's getting a little easier now that COVID is is I I don't want to jinx it, but we're we're at least it's not as bad as it was in in twenty twenty one. So and again, I want to recognize everybody's hard work. I want to thank the councillors for their support. Many of you have, I've talked individually on different issues. And, you know, thankful for the mayor's leadership and wanting to see something done instead of kicking the can down the road. And again, I I'm just a firm believer in in us figuring out what our destiny is and working towards that instead of just sitting back and hoping things work out. You know, so that's that's it. The nutshell, I I appreciate the time. I know I I took a long time. I apologize. But I want to try to get this. And also, again, this is on our the city's website under Community Development, Economic Development, Supporting Documents, the full plan. And it's all there. So, thank you.
And thank you so much, Sal. And for to respond to Council O'Neill's question, maybe you could just add these slides. I mean, they'll be in the minutes, but it would be good to add these slides to to that website as well.
Sure.
So thank you. So can we can we take down the screen share and?
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that.
Awesome. Okay. We're all back, councillors. So this is our opportunity to ask questions to to Sal. Councillor Memart, I saw you were the first to have your hand raised.
I was just saying hello to everybody again.
Okay. Who would like to?
A lot of great work.
Who would like to begin with any questions for Sal or Jill? Councillor O'Neill.
Hi, thank you. So I apologize, I don't know all the players. You mentioned Anne Burke was an expert advising you. I who, I don't know what company she's with or what her was she, I mean, was Anne Burke? I don't know.
She's a consultant. She is, was assigned to us from the state when we won the grant.
Okay, from the state of the D H C D or the
Yes.
M A P C or?
Yeah, D H C D, Downtown Initiative.
And as a correction, Councillor O'Neill, M A P C is not the state. So, yeah, so there, this is all funded through D H C D, which is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you. So I have another question. You mentioned you sent surveys to downtown businesses. Do you know how many businesses responded?
So we had, I believe, twenty two complete responses
Okay.
that were sent back.
And did you contact any fisheries on Commercial Street or any of those? Because it's, it says the commercial or it says retail commercial somewhere, it said commercial, I'm sorry.
We did every business within the planning area. I'm sorry, I'm going to answer a lot of these questions because I was Community Development Director at the time. And this is one of probably the biggest initiatives that we led during, as part of the COVID recovery. So we sent surveys to every single business within the area, which basically went from the Water Sheet up to Middle Street.
From the Water Sheet?
So basically, from the harbor.
Okay, so that would that would not include Commercial Street Fisheries, right?
Yes, everything, yep. All the way from the Water Sheet, from the water, from Commercial Street, Commercial Rogers, Main, Middle. Did I miss something? And all the forks in between.
Maybe a side street here and there.
So they were, they all received surveys.
Councillor O'Neill, can we come back to you and sorry, kind of rotate around? Who else would like to ask questions? Councillor Majota. And by the way, Ken Costa is on the call. He's our auditor. Welcome, Ken. Go ahead, councillor.
I guess it's not necessarily a question, more of a comment. That's okay. Councillor Billman. No, this is just, I I find out that a lot, it looks like a lot of work was involved and this is great. A lovely pop-up where, you know, you do drive down Main Street and you do see vacant buildings and you're like, there could be so much more there. So allowing, you know, those pop-up businesses is great. Always reminds me of those Halloween stores that pop up on Route one fourteen. You're like, oh, great, I know it's Halloween season, but you know, if a pop-up, one of those can pop up in Main Street, something like that, where it creates business for everyone, I think that's such a great opportunity and looks like there's a lot of work involved, all the businesses. So this is awesome. So thank you.
Thank you. Just as a response, the timing of the pop-ups was very specific, that we would like them to launch during this season when we have more people here with hopes that we we can either do a second round, depending on funding, either a second round or they'll be established by the holiday season so that we are really also investing in and getting the attention of the locals as we move in. Obviously, we're always working past the summer, right? Our goal is a sustainable economy downtown. So we're always trying to work past just the summer. So there's lots of strategy behind that as well.
Yes, Halloween and Christmas time is around the corner, so looking forward to that.
And shop local for Christmas.
Of course.
We want to see your little goblins, Frank, for Halloween. So hopefully, you you put them on a cell here on one of our Zoom calls, so.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we we're involved in all the community stuff.
Who else has questions or comments? Councillor O'Hara.
Thank you. Sal or Jill, how many surveys were sent out?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but Sal, we can get that to you, councillor. We have the, I I know, but I can't tell you the number exactly, but our survey return rate was mu- much higher than the state average, but Sal can get that to you. Which is what, I don't, I have a background in survey science, as does Vicky on our on our team. And so in surveying, it's about the percentage of returned surveys, so we can get to that number.
Well, could I follow up?
Of course.
Go ahead.
As a business owner of twenty plus years, obviously, time as a business owner is extremely limited. Is there any chance as far as, you know, twenty two returned surveys? Just from memory, I can, I I say there's significantly more businesses, you know, from the Water Sheet up to Middle Street. Is there any chance as far as this ongoing that you could spend some of that money and have people actually go do knocking on business owners to kind of corral them into answering questions? Because again, business owners, and I I speak from twenty years, seven days a week, you're twenty four hours a day. It just, you you need to be, you need to put someone right in front of their faces to get the best response. Is there anything that could happen or did happen?
Yeah, absolutely. I would just want to clarify, there isn't any additional money now. This was, this was money that happened at the time of that. That's not to say that as we move any of these initiatives forward, they will all take additional community input. So yes, to the going forward. But just so to reflect back on what did happen, we absolutely did, acknowledging you're a hundred percent right, and in the middle of the pandemic, getting participation from the businesses was ten times harder, particularly restaurants. We have found Sal and I through, especially through COVID, you know, restaurant owners, they're they're the, right, what is it called? The cook, the chef, the bottle washer and the waiter, right? So a hundred percent agree with you. In this effort, not only did we reach out and go door to door, councillor Cox, former councillor Cox, if she was here tonight, could let you know she was part of that. Councillor Cox walked, walked to the district, Sal walked the district, our consultant Anne Burke walked the district. So we did do a lot of the door knocking. Again, not everybody was at their door at that time, right? We're talking mid-pandemic. But as we move these initiatives forward, there's absolutely an opportunity for additional input. Thank you.
Who has not asked a question, would like to ask a question? Go ahead, Councillor Worthley.
Thank you. Thank you, Jill Cahill and Stas, Stefano for bringing this together. And it's not easy, I'm sure. Like Councillor Harret mentioned, twenty two responses is great, but it's not really reflective of the entire community. It'd be great if there's some further outreach as any of these projects move forward. I do want to ask, you said this was data-driven. Can we see the data?
It's all in the report, councillor. It's all on the website.
I have the report and I've looked at it.
All the state, all the state reflected data is in there from what they got gathered. And then it's also in the One Stop application. If you've ever gone to their One Stop page, but yes.
So I I've kept the page up right now. What I don't have is the questions that were asked, maybe that's in there. Who was asked, who replied? Is that the kind of data that we'll find online?
I don't know that we got, we would, that that specific is online, but if you would like to put in a request for all of that information through the Community Development Department. You know, we have a matrix that we kept with all the feedback.
So I do want to, I do want to add to that, there could be, and I don't have the the policy in front of me, but there could be some privacy concerns because they did ask what business was struggling with what and if X Y Z company said that they're struggling financially, they probably wouldn't want that on display. That would be, that would obviously wouldn't be good. So I don't know if the state is making available a specific response from a specific business because, of course, that could skew what somebody would be willing to put on paper, understandably. It wouldn't be fair for somebody's, you know, response if they're struggling to be out, you know, for everybody to see. So this, that's that's the only thing. And and I also want to say, there's a lot of questions here about surveys and concerns. That was one component of everything we did in terms of focus groups, one-on-ones, and, you know, Councillor O'Hara was right. Some business owners aren't going to take the time to do a survey, but they might give you five minutes on the phone and and I'll take it. You know, I get it. I get what Councillor Harris said, you know, twenty-four seven. You know, he's he's not lying. And I think that, to be fair to everybody, we we met them where they were at, specifically what they were willing to give time-wise.
Councillor Worthley, though, we do have a matrix where we summed it up and did some review. I I mean, I have to, it's been over a year, so I'd have to see and make sure it's not, it doesn't have specific names called out. But assuming all those confidentially confidentiality things, that anything that we had disclosed in the survey as this one, we wouldn't address, you know, we wouldn't release your business name, as long as none of that's in it, we obviously will release to you whatever we can.
Thank you.
Just please make a request, you know, a formal request.
Thank you. Councillor Grow, I saw your hand raised.
Yes, thank you. Very quickly, assuming we're not going to be going into another pandemic anytime soon, hopefully, cross our fingers. What are your, what are your main couple of takeaways from this process and how is that going to shape development of of ideas moving forward for economic development downtown and in the commercial zones?
So Sal, I'll go first and you can
Sure.
back clean up if you want. So I think one of, as Sal alluded to at the beginning of his discussion, since the day I stepped foot into the city as Community Development Director, we've been trying to figure out how to do some work downtown, how to get the funding to take a look at it, how to do the analysis. So knowing that the Amazon problem was here long before COVID. So for for me and what I I believe I brought to this administration, this opportunity was huge to take a look at downtown. I think the biggest thing that we're carrying with us from downtown in particular, right? Because this was a very hyper-focused, hyper-fast, super intense look at a very specific area. Is the downtown management organization piece is something that we're focused on right now. And with the goal of, and councillors, particularly Ward Two, you know this, there's a, there's a void between what expectations are of the public and what the city can actually provide downtown. And somebody needs to fill that void and that's where a downtown management organization comes into play. First question we asked everybody in this process was name some downtowns that you love to visit. And we heard a whole lot of Portsmouth, a whole lot of Newburyport, a whole lot of places out west, all of which upon research have some sort of downtown management organization. So we're pushing, that's why we pushed that one forward. Got a lot of attention from our partners at Mass Development and at the state. There's a lot of successful examples in the Commonwealth. So we're putting a lot of effort behind that. I would say another one, again, this will be, your question was kind of bigger to commercial, but this plan was super hyper-focused on on downtown. We heard a lot about parking, wayfinding, you know, really establishing downtown as a destination for locals and visitors alike. So that's kind of step two for us and that too is, and that's why we've launched the parking. We're hoping to get some counts. I was with Greg and and the new Community Development Director, who will be before you guys shortly. Really excited to have him on board. Yesterday, talking about the updating of the of the parking stuff. So parking, wayfinding is kind of the next step. So they all, they all kind of go hand in hand. I think the other side, the larger things that we can take from this hyper-focused study that I think the other side, the larger things that we can take from this hyper-focused study that, um, you know, we don't, we can't necessarily solve, but are certainly, is certainly a number one for everyone is, um, workforce development. And we know, you know, was that, was that common thread through every discussion we had? Yes. Is that a local government fix? Not so much, but we have also, uh, we are working closely with some of our partners, Wellspring, Action, The Chamber, um, incredible, um, J-one visa program that happened this year. I don't know how much you guys know about it. Um, so hitting that in the ways that we can, but that's obviously a national problem that we can't solve on our own, but I would say that would be the the biggest cross-sector one. Sal, I don't know.
But also add mass hire. Uh, we connected them with the Chamber to hold office hours. That is our state partner um, for workforce development. Um, and, um, you know, they they just launched a successful program there. They're going to be doing work with Gloucester High School um, with some training, um, focused on the trade. So uh, really positive things happening. So I I agree with Jill. I also think that, um, through this investment in in planning, we're going to continue to identify resources and grant opportunities that we could jump on and and get that. Um, which was always, you know, which is always a challenge is is getting that funding. So, um, so it's, it's really exciting and, um, like we said, it it's, it's going to take time, but we're already seeing progress and and the fruits of all of our labor collectively.
Great. Thank you. Counsel Gross.
Yeah, I, uh, thank you, Sal, for that presentation. Um, and Jill, thank you for being here. Um, of course, one of the the things that that we we need to keep in mind is that we have, um, significant problems that had nothing to, that are not COVID-related. And all this, this is about COVID recovery, and we need to keep that in mind so that we can um, stay focused on what this report is about. Um, another thing, um, surveys are are they're a delicate, delicate thing, and I think that if you do not keep the the respondents confidential, you're going to really limit the respond, you know, how much, how many respondents, responses you are going to get. Um, you know, that that's, that's the key on any survey, I think, that we found is that you don't, that people are assured that what they say is not going to be made public. Um, another thing is, um, I don't know, Counsel Worthy, the, I found that the appendices had a lot of the data. Um, it broke it down quite a bit in the appendix. Um, so that's, that's where I found a lot of the stuff that was extremely helpful, tedious, but, uh, but helpful. And then wrap up, what, um, what's our plan on moving forward with, oh, I have one more thing after this. Oh, no, I'll say that first. Have, is there been any thought to, I'm sorry, to increase parking by getting rid of the ridiculous nubbins? Um, you know, that were put in, ill-conceived, put in a long time ago, and we would have regained double the parking spaces that are taken up by outdoor dining by just eliminating those nubbins. Um, they've just irritated me since day one, but uh, you know, it's not like it's a racetrack down Main Street, and those are a traffic control, um, you know, fixture and and completely unnecessary on our Main Street. But also, what are we going to do for the, how are we, um, trying to enact some of this stuff if there's no funding left? Um, are we just putting this in our toolbox of what, of the issues that the respondents brought to our attention as as to their high priorities?
Oh, I'll go to the nubbins first because I didn't know what that word meant until I got involved in this process. Um, when we, when we do the parking and traffic study, they'll, of course, take a look at that. I, I don't know. Um, obviously, nubbins, like everything else, have, there are people who benefit from them and there are people who don't. Um, but when they do the overall parking study, they'll definitely take a look at it. Um, but, and I'm so grateful to know what that word means now. It sounds like it's from like Harry Potter or something. Um, the second part of the question. So, um, one of the main reasons that we jumped on this opportunity the moment it came out from the state was that the whole theory, as we've talked about in all of, right, like this is the way that, um, particularly under the Baker administration, which will be moving on, but, um, hopefully, I think it's a, it's a great model is, right, they provide funding for the plan. And then they provide funding for the action after the plan, but you're, what you're asking for money for better have shown up in the plan because the plan is the part where you kind of do the backup work. So, um, it's, it's classic in their climate resiliency, it's classic in their housing, it's classic in their economic development. Um, and I hope the model continues. So we expect to see more and more funding coming out for, um, recovery projects. Um, and again, you, thank you for clarifying that. This was, again, so super hyper-focused that as much as we'd love to have, have had a larger, longer-term planning effort, this was laser-focused. Um, so we're hopeful to keep seeing these roll out. MLBD, I will say the state admitted as as we have through this, um, people and the feds, right, we've all been, they've all been kind of tripping over themselves, trying to get money out, and then they release a program, they're not quite sure what it is yet, but we're already asking them for the money. Um, so we'll be, we expect to see more, um, through these opportunities. I think the One Stop um, is a perfect example, and so we have that ask in front of them. Um, and then we'll take a, um, we'll take a look. I mean, this, we, obviously, the local, um, COVID recovery funds, ARPA, as people are talking about it, um, and in the short version, Mr. Gross, you were at Counsel Gross, you were on the committee, economic development is a huge piece of that discussion. Um, and so we'll be breaking down how that investment goes between infrastructure, public health, public services, um, and economic development, um, and other category, housing, things that like that that came up as we review that report. Um, so I think there's going to be continued, it'll be both of, both of what you said, there'll be continued opportunities going forward, and now we have a toolbox to help us say, here's an idea that's come up, let's vet it further and move it forward with some funding. I think, um, one of the main things we tried to do when I started in Community Development Director, instead of a grant opportunity coming down and us, the city responding with, let's make up something that'll fit in there, we're really have been trying to move to the here's all of the projects we have in front of us that have, have, we've begun the discussion on, they've been to city council, we've had this discussion, the public is starting to talk about it. Then the, then when the grant, grant opportunities come up, we have a list already ready to go that says, let's talk about this one again, let's pull this one, let's take a look at that.
Thank you.
Great. I have a question to, um, to Sal and Jill. By the way, thank you so much for presenting this. So my question is more specific to my ward and Lanesville in particular. So there was a little bit of confusion with, um, a couple of my constituents that there perhaps had been, um, a fair amount of, um, speculation that these types of programs would be um, spread out to Lanesville, and there wasn't a feeling that this had really been vetted with, um, the community in Lanesville. And, um, I know when we talked, Joe, you talked that that was really specific to signs. So could you and Sal just elaborate a little bit on that? Because, you know, I I just want to make sure that we're, um, we're clear.
Sure. Um, I think that, and Ward Councilors all know this, right, when we, so we had, again, back to this is hyper-focused, when we applied for this, we had to to identify a specific district. Um, and when we do something like that, depending on what it is, you'll hear, um, whether from Ward One in Rocky Neck saying, hey, but what about us? We could really use that, or Lexington Ave and Ward Five, what about us? Um, so we wanted to make sure that the other, uh, whether they're neighborhood business or, um, commercial districts in general, know that if we learn things in this, that we can apply and expand, um, to other, um, that create opportunities in other wards. Um, we would definitely use those tools to do so, uh, but again, not without the input and and thinking about how it affects them. Perfect example, Ward Five, we've been working closely, um, with Lexington Ave and The Chamber for a really long time on wayfinding and pointing people towards Lexington Ave. Um, if we find opportunities through this, um, program and the doors that this opened for us, that will help, um, establish some funding for some wayfinding to that, to that downtown commercial area, we're going to use it. Um, if we learn things from parking or have a opportunity to, um, bring some attention to the parking issues on Rocky Neck that we opened the doors to on this project, we're going to use it. So, um, you know, that, I think that's how the comment was made. Um, and I think the signage program, Sal did a great job. I don't know if he knows it off the top of his head, but worked really hard to recruit applicants from throughout the community, so it wasn't just downtown.
Thank you. Okay, how about one more question and then we can get to the next order. Um, Counsel O'Hara, Counsel Worthy, both of you had your hand raised at the same time. So Counsel O'Hara, go ahead, and then Counsel Worthy.
Um, how much was spent in by the city on this program today? Any idea?
Great. I think it was fully state-funded, right, Sal?
Yeah, the local rapid recovery plan was provided by the state, um, through the DHCD, and it was technical assistance.
Yes, what was the dollar value spent?
Technical assistance, so we don't see any of the money. It goes directly to the consultant. So it wasn't, no, no city taxpayer dollars, no, none of our money.
Well, all, all taxpayers' dollars.
But I'm saying you won't see it in our, there was no match, no city match. But if you, I I don't, I don't know, I mean, I mean, they must be able to send it to us if we ask, but I don't know what the grant. I don't know what each consultant was received. She worked in more than one community, so they'd have to break it down.
Could you find out and report back to us or please? Thank you.
Sal, I have two, those two different things to report back on, but we'll follow up. You can just track them.
Thank you. And Counsel Worthy, and and then, um, we're ready to, um, to move to the next order of business. Go ahead, Counsel Worthy.
Ken, thank you. Um, I just want to check in a couple of things. I'm looking at the document and it says, uh, next steps. I just want to make sure I know where we stand in this process and what the process is. It says focus groups in June, refining project ideas in June, consult with subject matter experts, June, July. I'm assuming this is two thousand twenty-two, finalizing list of projects, June, July, update committee uh, on projects, July, draft final plan, August. Is that, um?
I believe that was from
That was all last year.
Last year.
Okay, so what
So the final plan was what I reported on today. So that was done uh, last year. So those were benchmarks for that, to create that plan.
So at this point, though, we're seeing the filed plan from last year. Is there some expectation that we as a council do something with this plan? Uh, I think, so you said this is, gives us, when there's opportunities, we have a plan in place. Are we accepting this plan? Are we saying, are we endorsing this plan? What, what is the ask right now? Or is there an ask?
There is no ask of you at this time. As things come up and as opportunities to move some of these things come forward, you guys, a perfect example, Counsel Worthy, you guys approved the grants for the signage and the pop-up. When we had the opportunity to move those projects forward, uh, we brought those before the council and you approved those grants. So those
Total one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yep.
And so what you're saying is because we have this plan, when those opportunities come up, we don't have to sort of recreate the wheel? Is that the expectation?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Okay, I'm going to make this simple for me. What's the purpose of this plan? What's the objective at this point?
This is the local rapid recovery. This was hyper-focused on how to help our downtown, the district that we talked about, recover from the effects, uh, the economic effects of COVID nineteen on their businesses. And so the, this whole, the whole purpose of this presentation was because the council asked for an update. But no, no action is needed from you at this time. As we move things forward and have opportunities, uh, we'll bring them forward.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much, uh, Sal, for being here and for being flexible with your timing and, uh, and for Jill for being here as well.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
Counselors, would anyone like to pull any matter off the consent agenda? Seeing none, does someone move to approve the consent agenda as noted?
So moved.
Counsel Worthy has moved it. Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Memmar, seconded it. Roll call vote, Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memmar?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan is absent. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthy?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
This is Budget and Finance Standing Committee report of August fourth.
Ken, I'd like to turn control of the meeting over to BNF Chair Scott Memmar.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we have three matters from Budget and Finance for your consideration this evening. Um, the first was a, is a memorandum from our Director of Elder Services, Lee Sinagra, requesting acceptance of donations in the total amount of three thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. And I'll go ahead and provide the details. Uh, on a motion by myself, seconded by Counsel Worthy, Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend city council accept cash donations under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A to support the council on aging in the total amount of three thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars from the following members and business partners within our community. Newland Biolabs, Marion Hasselgard, Marilyn Grant, Dorothy McKay, Jerry Filarro, Margaret, um, Disperoni, Dorothy Gentile, and Ray Simpson, again, for a total of three thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memmar, seconded by Counsel Worthy. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memmar?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan is absent. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthy? Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Counsel Memmar.
The second item from Budget and Finance is a memorandum from the Harbor Master for supplemental appropriation budgetary request, twenty twenty-three S A number one, in the amount of twenty-three thousand dollars. Uh, and this is for the acquisition and installation of a new replacement motor in the Gloucesterman, the city's, uh, public, um, what do you call it, uh, launch, launch service, which had a, a spectacular breakdown and was followed by a spectacular recovery by TJ and his crew with the help of KPM Arena and other vendors. Shall I read the motion? Dick, any questions?
Please.
Uh, on a motion by Counselor Memmar, seconded by Counsel Worthy, Budget and Finance voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, recommend the city council approve supplemental appropriation twenty twenty-three S A one in the amount of twenty-three thousand dollars from the Waterway Enterprise Stabilization Fund transfers to enterprise fund account as noted to Waterways Enterprise Fund purchase of services account as noted for the purpose of replacing the motor in the Gloucesterman launch boat, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memmar, seconded by Counsel Worthy. Is there a discussion?
Uh, Counselor Gross was not present at our last meeting, but I'm sure he could give us some insights of what was involved, but we we all are very grateful to TJ and his fast action and resourcefulness. And we're very fortunate to have this launch service back up and running after, I think, only eight or ten down days.
Um, if I may, yeah, they, they really did, um, particularly in this time of supply chain, they had to um, change the, the model, the make and model of the engine, which, as we all know, when you put things in, they have different, uh, points of securing to the bed of the, uh, to the engine bed. And they, they pulled that off pretty quick, but one amusing part was, is when the truck showed up with the box, you know, the plywood box on a nail to a pallet, showed up at KPM Arena, it was empty. Everybody, and and, you know, they called the owner, they, you know, the owner was aghast that this guy, you know, used a fork truck to lift something that weighed about, you know, fifty pounds, it should have weighed about two thousand or no, fifteen hundred, but it was, so that was a little, that was a hiccup in the beginning, but it's an amusing one. So.
They were not sitting employees.
They were not. This was the, uh, the engine vendor's employee who, I'm sure, didn't drive the truck for a while after that.
Oh, my. Thank you for sharing. Um, good discussion, Counsel Worthy.
Yes, uh, I was on Budget and Finance. I just want to add one other piece of information, and Scott and Tony can clarify or verify. Uh, this is not asking both taxpayers to spend twenty-three thousand more dollars. This is asking This is not asking both taxpayers to spend $23,000 more dollars. This is asking City Council to allow the Waterways Board to use $23,000 of their stabilization account, which is traded through mooring fees in their operation themselves. So this is them using their savings and it being embedded through the City Council to then move to their operating account so they can pay for this exercise. So this isn't an ask for more money, it's a transfer of existing funds.
Thank you for making that, that point clearly. Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Council O'Neill?
I just have a question. Um, let me find it. Um, hold on. Stabilization fund transfers. For the purchase of services, when, when I think of services, I think of labor, not motors. So, I'm sorry, what?
Both were involved. It was an outside contractor and an outside purchase of the actual hardware.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor.
Do we, do we know exactly how much the motor by itself costs without the labor?
Tony, I don't know if you can shed light on that?
I, I, I don't have a, an invoice that I can pull right up, but looking at that, I would guess it's probably about between 15 and 18,000.
For the, for the engine.
Jill, do you have any, anything to add to that?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but ask Kenny Costa and he will supply to you because we can't do anything without going through Kenny.
Yeah.
So anything you need, Counselor, you can feel free to ask Kenny, he'll supply it.
Kenny will have that invoice.
Okay, so it is broken down, so.
Always, everything we do.
All right, because it just says services, so that's why I was.
It's just the name of the, it's just the name of the budget line item, Counselor.
It may have been purchased, purchased through the KPM Arena who did the actual installation, but you would have all of the breakdown of everything on that, I would assume.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Council O'Hara?
Council Gross might be first, or Jill. What created the failure?
Through a rod.
Was it expected?
No, they had, they had, you know, the engine had been maintained steadily, but it runs a lot and it's a little three cylinder diesel. And it runs, you know, what? Eight to 10, you know, seven days a week. Half of June, July, all of August, and into, and half of September. So three months, it's running, you know, 10 hours a day, most, mostly.
Any, any hours run a motor?
I, I, I couldn't, couldn't tell you, but you, a motor that size, I bet it, if you get over 6, 7,000 hours, you're, you're pushing your luck.
Council Worthy?
I have the packet in front of us from BNF and it was 6,000 hours for that motor. And it also says here that it was a blown valve and rocker, and I'm sure the language.
Okay, yeah.
Great. Awesome. Any further discussion, Councillors, on this motion? Council O'Neill?
Sorry, is, is the, the new motor, is it bigger? So it'll last longer or? Would a bigger motor have two more hours?
That's not how it works. I don't know a lot about boats, but I know bigger motor doesn't mean longer time. It's a lot of hours on a boat, Tony can.
I think it might be a four cylinder. But, and the, over the, the, the plan the Harbor Master conveyed to me, that the plan is over the winter to rebuild the motor that we have that came out so that we have a, a motor on the shelf ready to go if this happens again. And obviously, you're going to have the, your old engine mounts and things, will, you'll probably be able to re-access those holes and things that are already right there, because fortunately, the engine bed is made out of aluminum. Assuming it's I-beam aluminum, so they, it's, it's holes, not, you know, like fiberglass end mounts or anything like that. So they, it'd be, it's a, it'll be a much easier, quicker process if we have a rebuilt motor sitting on the shelf, winterized and ready to go.
Okay, um, one more discussion, Council Memard.
Uh, in, in, in response to Counselor O'Neill's question and Tony's comments, our Harbor Master made clear as well that based on the level of demand for services and the importance of, of really minimizing any possible interruption in those services during the short summer season, that long-term, our Harbor Master's plan is to infect plan for the acquisition of a second backup line so that we can reduce the wear and tear on one and spread it out over two and provide some level of assurance that the reliability will be maintained. So that's a longer term ask and plan that he has, that he's working on.
Great. So I'm just, just to kind of summarize the discussion, I, I actually sat in on that BNF meeting and our Harbor Master was great in answering all the technical questions. So, so let's, we've got a motion made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Worthy. Roll call vote, Council Grow?
Spectacular yes.
Council Majota?
Absolutely.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan is absent. Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthy?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Council Memard.
Yes, thank you. That was a great discussion. The third item from Budget and Finance is a memorandum from the Public Health Director and a special budgetary transfer request, 2023 SBT one in the amount of $9,000. And this is for hiring outside services due to the short staffing in the Health Department currently to allow us to do sanitation inspections. And I'll go ahead and read the whole motion and we can have a discussion.
Thank you.
On a motion by Councilor Memard, seconded by Council Worthy, Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve special budgetary transfer, 2023 SBT one in the amount of $9,000 from the account number as specified, Board of Health salaries, through account number as specified, Board of Health purchase of services for the purpose of contracting an individual to provide sanitary and inspector services for the Health Department. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Worthy. Is there a discussion?
Just that they're short, short-staffed and that we're, we're, the city is looking to fulfill, to fill that position. And this is a stopgap, short-term measure that's been brought to us by the Board of Health.
Thank you, Counselor. Council O'Neill?
Thank you. Is this, how? How much does this $1,000, this $9,000 get us? I mean, is that three-month period, six-month period, or is it man-hours? Is it part-time? Is it full-time?
It'll be through a contract and it'll be by inspection. So just, it'll by inspection. So it, it all depends on how many people ask for a title time.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan's absent. Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthy?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
I would like to mention that the ordinance administration did not meet on August 1st, they had no matters to come before them. The next order of business is the planning and development of August 3rd meeting.
Council Gross? Grow, sorry?
We don't have anything to discuss tonight except for an invitation to the rest of the council committees. Getting a number of poll petitions coming before us, we have two more coming up at our next meeting. If you have any extraordinary issues revolving around National Grid polls, please give me the phone number and the location so that I can pass these on to the National Grid's representation. The answer is going, I know is going to be, well, we can't do anything until Verizon and Comcast get their wires off the polls. But at the same time, we can also stop approving poll petitions until they start getting things done. And we had this happen a decade ago with double polls. I, I just, it's one of my little pet peeves that we don't get these things done in a timely manner. So please let me know if you have any issues and I will pass them along. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
This is Public Hearing 2022-021 to amend Gloucester Code of Warrants, chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-270. Parking prohibited at all times in Section 22-291 towaway zones by adding Hovey Street, South East Side, beginning at its intersection with Summer Street in a westerly direction to its intersection with Babson Street.
I'd like to open the public hearing and ask for anybody to speak in favor. Seeing none, would anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is there any correspondence, Madam Clerk?
No, there are no communications.
Are there any questions, Councillors? Council Majota?
It, it won't be quite, I'll just wait till after the public hearing then to make my comment.
Okay, thank you. So I will close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from Council O'Hara.
Sure.
Nolan's absence.
Yes. On a motion by Council O'Hara, seconded by Council Majota, the ONS inspection committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council amend GCO, Chapter 20, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 20, 7, 0, parking prohibited at all times by adding Hovey Street, South East Side, beginning at its intersection with Summer Street in a westerly direction with Babson Street. And amend GCO, Section 22-291 towaway zone by adding Hovey Street, South East Side, beginning at its intersection with Summer Street in a westerly direction to its intersection with Babson Street, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor O'Hara and it was seconded by Council Worthy. Is there a discussion, Councillors? Council Majota, since this was your order?
Um, yes, this is one of my orders and I, I feel like it's very important. I, if you're not, if you ever driven down that street where cars are parked on both sides, it, it is a safety issue where it becomes very difficult for cars to travel in both directions. And when speaking to, with the traffic commissioner about it, we were in that situation and, you know, it was close to like almost getting hit by a car by standing by our cars with both cars parked on the both sides. And speaking to some of the constituents, when that does happen, there is property damage where cars have bumped into homeowners' fences. So I feel like it's important that we do have the no parking, one for safety and to protect the homeowner's property. So something that is very important to me and I feel like that it would just make a safer street. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion, Councillors? Council Gross? Can you unmute yourself, Council Gross?
If I have to. If, I lived right around the corner at 52 Summer Street and Frank's absolutely correct, that side of the street, there really is, it's no, there is no shoulder, really. And, and getting by over there is, is difficult. Also, on that side, the homes all have driveways. So it's not a major hardship up there. And so this is probably a good move for, for safety sake.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Councillors? Council Worthy?
Just want to say I'll be supporting this. I know that Council Majota has worked hard on this for quite some time and I want to give him credit and commend him for pulling this together finally. And another few steps as you learn along the way, this might be one of the first ones you've done and I congratulate you for getting it done.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Counsel O'Hara?
Thank you. I too will be supporting this. Our is be, is, is filling up with more traffic on a daily basis, for one reason or another. And it's, it's, it's becoming a, a major problem. This isn't the only area. There are many streets in the, in, in the area that we're talking about tonight that similar could, could, or constituents have contacted me pertaining to other parking issues. So by eliminating parking spaces someplace, obviously, those cars are going to have to relocate someplace to park. So we as a city really need to get parking under control. I don't have the answer, but it, it is a major issue. But again, tonight, I certainly will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes, and thank you, Frank.
Council Nolan is absent. Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Absolutely, yes.
Council Worthy?
Yes.
Council Gilman, absolutely. Council Gross?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
This is for Council Vote, Council Order 2022-014, Gilman. Amend City Council Rules of Procedure by adding Rule 19, Request to Seek Information from City Staff. And this was continued from the July 26th City Council meeting.
And Councillors, I am going to ask that we return this to ONA because I would like to refer this out to our General Counsel. So we can have our, our General Counsel Suzanne Egan look at this request in its totality as related to the city charter and then come back to us with recommendations back to ONA. So Council Gross thought that maybe we should have a governance meeting, but actual, and, but in speaking to both Grace and Joanne, in governance, you can't really vote on matters. So I think that the way to go is for me to make a motion to refer this back to ONA and General Counsel, and I so move.
Second.
I think that was Council Grow with something in his mouth, okay?
Man is mightier than the sword.
So, is there a discussion on this? Okay, roll call vote, Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan is absent. Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthy?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
This is Councillor's request to the Mayor.
Okay, we'll go in order of the roll call tonight. So we will start with Council Grow.
I have nothing new. I've already submitted any requests to the mayor through Joanne's office and directly from the mayor's office. So we'll, we'll all set.
Thank you. Council Majota?
I will be submitting a request to the mayor later this week and bring this up to ONA, but nothing new.
Council O'Hara?
Um, I would just like to ask the, the possibly you, Council President, if we could possibly have representative from the city report to us as far as the water levels in our reservoirs and in relation to obviously the drought conditions that we're experiencing. I think it's important to, to educate the public. With the water bans, believe it or not, I've, I've had a constituent explain to me the reason why they're running their sprinkler system is because they're concerned of wildfires. And they need, they want to keep their property that has multiple buildings on it green so that they don't burn. So people are, you know, really thinking outside the box, whether right or wrong. They're concerned. And I think it's important for us to educate the public on where we are at with our, with our water supply.
Can I, can I just respond, Counselor, for this? So we actually have planned for the next meeting a presentation on the water supply as well as a presentation from the Gloucester Fire Department, including Chief Smith as well as. well as Bob Rivas, and they'll be coming to kind of go over the totality of the recent brush fire, as well as the matters that they're focusing on for public safety. So it will be both matters on the next agenda. So thank you for bringing that up.
Terrific. No, that's, that's, I, I thank you, because Council Grow pointed out a serious issue which happened. The Grow, or Grow, excuse me, the day fireworks over in East Gloucester. Again, we, we as a city have to be extremely concerned and go overboard on preventing fires during this extreme time drought. I also asked, I emailed the mayor pertaining to what happened at, at Varian with the hundred foot, 160-foot blade of the windmill that, that fell from the sky. We have two other windmills, and I've received concerns from constituents about the two adjacent windmills. Now, they're not the same manufacturer, but we don't know what caused the failure. And, you know, was it salt-water related, salt-air related? We don't know, but we have, we have two windmills that are spinning with close proximity that could cause, unfortunately, major problems should one of the blades decide to detach. I, I run this by the, the council president, but I haven't gotten an answer. We have the director of the senior center, who has never been confirmed by the city council.
Councilor, I am working on that matter with the clerk's office, and so we will continue to, to look into that, so we...
Terrific. I have got no response from you, Madam President.
Well, I tried to call you three times this week, and I didn't get a return call. So I, I thought that it would be a good time for us to talk, so...
Sent an email, you can respond by email, so that I can properly get back to the constituents who are of concern.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I also asked the, the mayor, Council Nolan isn't here, but I continue to get calls on the Magnolia Pier. Obviously, the season is near ended, but the people are very concerned, they're, they're risking safety. There are 78 boats, that more, in the Gloucester Manchester Harbor, and their means of access right now from the beach, and that's not safe. The pier was built, when they cut the ribbon for the pier, it had out-hauls on both sides of the pier, so...
Council O'Hara, you are frozen for the moment. Let's go back.
I'd like to get that addressed by the mayor for the benefit of the constituent. And these aren't just people from Magnolia, these people from all over the city. I think that's important. People continue to swim in the Good Harbor Beach Creek. That, that creek, as far as I know, is very, very much unsafe. They swim in it, obviously, we, we are in extreme heat, people are looking for comfort, and they go to the, the water, but they're swimming in that creek, which is very, very unsafe. Again, maybe it isn't any longer, but the last information we've received from the city is it's at four, over 14,000 parts per million, extremely unsafe, and we have people swimming in that. I don't think any of us would allow their children, their grandchildren, their family friends, to knowingly swim in that creek, but we as a city are allowing that. I think it's, it's, it's crazy. So I ask the administration to step up the safety of keeping people out of our creek. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Next is Council O'Neill.
Yes, thank you. I've asked this before, but I would like to request that the creek be tested at least weekly. I think it's important to know whether it's getting worse or better, whether, whether it spikes a certain time of the week, or whether it drops at a certain time of the week. I think knowledge is, is power, and data is knowledge, so the more data we have, the more knowledge and power we have to find out what's going on. Because if it happens every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, or it happens during a heavy rain, we haven't had any heavy rain, so, until today, but I think it's important that we know on a weekly, if not daily, basis, what is, what the numbers are, on, you know, are they going, are they getting worse, are they getting better? Do they spike on the weekends, do they drop on the weekday? I think that's, that that would be good, very good knowledge to have. So that's my request to the mayor to, through, through the mayor, to the Department of Health. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Worthley?
Thank you, first, thank you, everybody. I had a staycation with my kids this past week, and we were able to enjoy Gloucester again, ways we probably take for granted, and we're very lucky to have Gloucester. We went to the beach a lot, and we did observe that there's no signage on the way into the beach about the creek, and the lifeguards that we were sitting next to said that they weren't given lots of information about what to tell people. Again, that was one lifeguard that said that, or a couple that were there. We went towards the creek, and my kids said, well, why, they're swimming, why can't we? So I talked to some people, and one of the persons in the water said, lifeguards told them that after five, they can swim however they want, wherever they want. And I just thought, if that's the message, and I'm not knocking lifeguards, they work really hard, but if the message is, I'm not here to tell you no, so you can swim, then we're really sending the wrong message. There's a sign that says, "Creek closed, no swimming," and the no is crossed out, and it's just a little odd. So I thought that would be something we got to take a look at. Surprisingly, someone said, oh, I thought it said no swimming, but we could still be in the creek, which I guess you can't really regulate for that sort of level of understanding. But it's clearly an issue, people are still in the creek, and it's a problem. I put a request in two weeks ago for weekly testing, as Council O'Neill has added to that, but also an update on, we spent $120,000, or authorized $120,000 for a engineering firm to come in to do some work. I'm sure they're not done yet, but I'd love to know, A, if they have any findings yet, and B, how much money we've spent, so if there's an additional request for money, we're ready for that, or if we don't have the money, what the plan is. So obviously, this is still important. I like to double down on some of the things Council O'Hara said with the water supply, as Council Grow was pushing to find out, and also fire protection. We were very, very lucky that there wasn't any injuries, loss of life, or loss of property, aside from our open space, which is obviously very valuable. And I think we should be grateful for the work that the Fire Department and National Guard did to protect us. And I look forward to that presentation at our next meeting from Chief and Assistant Chief, Bob Rivas. Two last things, oops. On, on the fire, we used to have a watershed department, and it was a five-year program, where it was Rick Goncalves, who was the foreman, under Ed Parks' leadership, with the guidance from Joe Orange. And the goal was to preserve open space by cutting paths through open space for fire protection, to get deeper into the woods. And that was clearly an issue relative to Poles Hill. And I want to raise the question is, do we have a watershed department? Do we have a plan for getting to the woods? I think the answer is no, but if the answer is no, then what is the plan to fix that? And then lastly, Council Grow raised the fireworks. The messaging I heard from a lot of people was that those fireworks were approved. Who is their approving authority that says it's okay to have fireworks? Is that the mayor's office, is it the fire chief, is it the firework committee? I don't know. I can't imagine anybody would say, yes, it's okay to have fireworks during the drought, considering noise ordinances, what have you. And I'm not un-American, but on the 6th of July, there were fireworks going off at 3:30 in the morning in my neighborhood, and I got accused of being unpatriotic for raising the question, but I think we need to figure out, how are fireworks, are they approved? Who does that? What are the criteria?
So, the, I believe the answer is that the Fire Department approves the fireworks. So, you know, if you, if you had concerns, I know Council Grow called to look into that and found out the answer, that they were permitted. So that basically is the process. So if you're, if you're, if you're concerned with that matter, then your request, as you've just stated, is you're, you're asking for an answer for who makes those calls during this, this drought, so...
What virtue do they use to make those decisions? And does it need to come through the council review to...
No, it does not, in the existing ordinance. City Clerk, Joanne, you had your...
It was my understanding that the fireworks were shut off from a barge, and I had heard that the Fire Department did not permit that, because it was not their jurisdiction, and it was either the U.S. Coast Guard or the state fire marshal. That was my understanding from a department head, so, but I'm, we're not sure. Okay, so, because we got the calls, and I know this matter came up last year when they were planning this whole event, and they were permitted well before the drought and all the fires that we've had.
So, so that's a, that's a very valid question, Council Worthley, so I'm glad that you brought that up. Thank you. Any other further requests? No? Okay, so next is...
Council member.
Go ahead.
I think you skipped me.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Council Memard?
You went right, you went right to Jamie.
I'm sorry.
He did that to me last week.
You've, oh, come on, stop picking on me. Council Memard, you have...
I have a few short recognitions I'd like to give thanks for the rain. I'd like to give thanks to our Fire Department and the work that they've done in difficult conditions in a tight neighborhood at Paul Hill, Poles Hill, although we can look forward to some blueberry crops improving up that way. I'd like to give thanks, as Jill recognized, that we have a new community development director, David Fields, and that's an exciting development to fill that and relieve Greg Catamatory from some of the extra duties that he's been filling. And I'd also like to recognize the group at Good Harbor Beach, Kim Smith, and the Piping Clover ambassadors. We celebrate a milestone with them at Good Harbor. We have five chicks that are produced by two different nests, that are now seven weeks old, 50 days old, and they have fledged and are able to fly on their own, so that's a remarkable contribution to resurgence of an endangered shorebird that many people enjoy, and a lot of effort was put by local people into safeguarding them and making sure that they survive as, as they have. So thank you.
Council Grow?
I, I just wanted to congratulate you, Council Gilman, on your controversial free tenure as mayor of Gloucester. Well done. I think we all prospered under your rule and in your reign, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, Council Grow, in all, I appreciate it. I, I will, I will tell you what I did, I played a little joke on Mayor Verga. I, I brought a couple of my family pictures into his office, and I placed them on his desk, so that they were there this morning when he got back to work. So he took a picture, and he was laughing, he thought it was pretty funny. And I also parked in his spot for an hour on Friday during a quick meeting at City Hall. So anyway, but thank you.
I think that the last, the last council president who's had that opportunity was Joe Shalino, that for some reason Sepatia never left town long enough to give anybody else a chance to sit in her chair, so...
It was, it was awkward sitting in the chair, though, I have to say. Anyway, but thank you. So next is Council Gross, and then finally, it's, I will be the last.
Just, I don't have any requests from the mayor, but I just want people to think about their avian friends. You know, ours are going nuts in the bird bath. We put out several other things, we're using our Pyrex pie plates, the dishes under plants, some old kitty litter boxes with rocks in them, so they can get in and out. But we've had to fill our wa, our, our bird baths multiple times a day, they're desperate for water, so if anybody can put out some, some, and there's no, there's cooler temperatures, but not a lot of water in sight, and, and today's really didn't even get through the trees, it was still dry ground under everything else. So, and just a couple of clarifications, there is no Gloucester moorings in Magnolia Harbor, they do not exist, and the out-hauls were removed off the old pier before it was demolished, they were actually attached to the float at that time, because there was such a hazardous situation with the homemade ladders that had been put up, that it was just felt that that was, some of them over rocks, that was just, talk about the creek being a liability for the city, that was really incredible, so hopefully that'll get, that'll get settled out with the new pier, and we can, that, that situation kept behind us, and everybody can get a satisfactory result. That's it for me.
Thank you. So I have a, a couple of just announcements and then a request. I'd like to request that a gate be put at the entrance to Poles Hill with a sign that says, "No trespassing, dusk to dawn." It's something that Cindy Dunn and Sandy Berry have asked for, for many years, they're both trail stewards for that area, they spend a lot of time up there, and we think that that would be really timely. So I'm making that request. Council Majota, where you share that area with me, would you like to join me on that request?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And then I wanted to just formally announce that we're having a, I'm having a neighborhood meeting on Plumco Beach on Tuesday, the 16th, at 6 o'clock, requesting people bring their beach chairs if they'd like, and we're going to be talking about hawkers and peddlers and the, the six location of a site for a vending truck, which has been at that site and has never really been used in the past. And this year, someone bid on it, and there is a successful business running there, and it's all duly permitted. So what, what the purpose of this meeting is, there's no council order on the table right now, there's no amendment, but some of the neighbors across the road from Plumco Beach have requested that they wanted to discuss this, and I said, if we discuss it, we need to discuss it with everybody, not just with the people that are opposed to it. So there's, there'll be a meeting on the beach, any large councilors are welcome to attend. Joanne, if you could ask them to post that, like you would just post a meeting, it's not, it's not like a city council meeting, because it's really just to listen to people discuss what they either approve, what they like about it or don't, there's, there's nothing on the table right now in front of us. But if you look on my Ward 4 page, you'll see that I've included the ordinance, a link to the ordinance, and I'm just being very careful that the expectation, the meeting is, is not about city business, it's about this ordinance and what it means, and to listen to both people in support and not, and to do it in a very civil way, because we want to make sure that we're treating each other respectfully, and I just wanted, in, in the, I just wanted to let you know that. And then finally, I wanted to just announce the Innispan Village Players, the opening night was tonight, last night, we had 65 seniors there, it was awesome, about 45 from Rose Baker and 23 from Rockport, and we had, the To Go Van brought a group of 14 with Rosalina Castro, and then there was the Cater Van brought others, and, and all these seniors were in the air-conditioned hall enjoying Mary Poppins. So just to let you all know that the show starts officially tonight, and it will end on Sunday night, and you can get your tickets at www.innispanvillageplayers.org, round paper tickets. And like I said, it's air-conditioned, it's quite nice in the Village Hall. So that concludes my part of my requests, and...
I have a question for Scott. Scott, do you think our senior invitations got lost in the mail?
You see...
Probably, honey.
You know, that is kind of scary, because I'm 50, you know, when I turned 59 and a half, they all said, you're an official, you can be an official member of Council on Aging at 59 and a half, because that's when the ARPA starts, right? you, you're an official, you can be an official member of council on aging at fifty-nine and a half, because that's when the ARP starts, right? Or is that, what's, what's A R R? What, what is that group that was?
A A R P.
Yeah, the A R R P, yeah. I haven't quite taken advantage of my discount at Dunkin' Donuts, but anyway. Um, so without further um, conversation, is there a motion to adjourn? Counsel Worthley, uh, second.
Second.
Counsel Gross, seconded. Uh, roll call vote, Counsel Grow.
Please, yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
The yeses have it.
Bye-bye.
Turn, goodnight, everybody. Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you all. Goodnight.